Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, October 19th, 2022. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Kail Smith, Ms. Strasburger, here. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavell Chair, six members present.
Thank you. I would like to remind all, our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules that council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before city council, profanity will not be permitted. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Monalyn Miller. I do not see Mr. Miller with us this morning, so our next speaker is Andre Morantz.
Right here.
Yes ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to, um, I live in the McKeesport area right now, and I just wanted to, um, say that I've been harassed for a long time. Um, it kind of started when I had custody of my granddaughter with CYF. Um, they kind of put me in the system, uh, put a bad name on me, and I guess those cops conspired with them, and it's still going on, and I'm just tired. They're doing all kinds of tactics, and they're telling people, "Don't believe me, she's crazy," so I can't get no help. But they're doing bodily, physical harm for having, you know, they're doing all these tactics and having people come at me, you know, all, all kind of ways. And, um, my granddaughter will be 22, you know, and it's just, I'm just tired of it, you know? Um, I tries to call on my phone, uh, lawyers, and they go behind me, and I tell the lawyers, "Don't believe her, she's crazy, we're not doing nothing to her." And, um, you know, just, they're trying to dehumanize me from, you know, I, I need dental. I haven't had dental in years. My teeth are falling out, you know, and nobody wants to help me, you know, because, you know, even my family members or the people who I stay with, they tell them things, and, um, they're just, you know, doing what they want. And I'm just really tired of it, you know? I guess they're trying to drive me crazy or something for me to snap out or something like that, but I'm not going to do that, you know? But, um, they're just doing all kinds of tactics. They're following me around all in the stores, and, you know, I ask them, "Well, why don't y'all just, you know, what are y'all doing this for?" And they'll, they'll tell me, you know, "Um, we don't even know you." Now, how do you not know me when I've been living in McKeesport? You know, I'm from Hazelwood-Hamstead area, you know, they all know me. They all do these things everywhere. They're out in the open. And, um, I did a research on them. I don't know, I came up with this gang stalking stuff. People say that's crazy, but that's the only thing I can come up with. That, you know, it, it tells you basically, it gives you insight of why they're doing this, you know? Uh, retaliation, uh, like I said, it started from CYS. So, I mean, you know, they were going around town to my neighbors in Lawrenceville, you know, uh, asking them what type of parent I was, and, you know, it just started from there, and it just, it's, it's just lingering on, you know, and I need them to really stop. They got, everybody's involved, so, I mean, and I just wanted to get my comments in like that, you know, hoping somebody can do something.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Andre DeValle.
Hi, good morning, city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the following legislation, uh, 2022-0270, which would create a license for short-term rentals as well as registry of those renting, uh, these short-term rentals. My name is Andre DeValle. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Pennsylvania Apartment Association. We are a statewide organization representing apartment owners, managing companies, and their industry supply, which represent 37,400 units, and 21 property management companies here in Pittsburgh. I'd like to begin my test, my testimony by thanking Council Member Wilson and both sponsors for their commitment to keeping residents in Pittsburgh safe following the horrific shooting earlier this year in a short-term rental property. I'm sorry. And, um, which was the impetus of this legislation. While we understand that this legislative body legislates for the bad actors, as written, we believe that this legislation unintentionally hurts the good actors. Our members who operate on primarily six-month and annual leases would be required to register their rental properties under the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections enforcement of the rental registration ordinance. And as currently written, this legislation does not define a short-term rental, and given that our members may extend their lease by a month due to pregnancy, job transition, or family emergency, it would leave members have to get a short-term rent, rental license for one unit in a multifamily building as written. We would urge you to consider language that defines a short-term rental as a unit for rent for no more than 15 consecutive days and a third-day period, which would separate the business model of our industry versus an Airbnb-like model. Our members do not primarily operate as short-term rental providers, and this legislation would create a duplicative process that would create more confusion than solutions. Now, we have shared these concerns with some members of this legislative body, and appreciate their willingness to hear our concerns as we work to keep all residents safe. The safety of our residents are our utmost priority, and we welcome the opportunity to work with this legislative body to find common set solutions that keep residents safe within Pittsburgh and our units. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today, and look forward to future stakeholder engagement meetings.
Thank you. That takes us to our last registered speaker, which is Bill Schlesner.
Good morning. My name is Bill Schlatter. I'm a resident of Mount Washington. I've spoken on this topic around the Airbnb a number of times. Um, the last time was in August when we all met around this bill, and, uh, it's been approximately half a year since the shooting, um, the tragic shooting on the north side. It does feel that sense of urgency to complete this bill has been, uh, kind of lost here, which is unfortunate. And I would hope since we've last met in August that there has been indeed some good progress. One of the concerns that I have been addressing, and Teresa Kail Smith echoed it in the last meeting, was the need for a primary resident for an Airbnb property. What happened on the north side was that it was owned by a corporation that didn't reside in Pittsburgh and had really zero accountability to the neighborhood. And the need for primary resident is extraordinarily important for accountability for neighborhoods that we all live in. Um, in fact, this is very common in cities throughout the country like our sister city Philadelphia, um, also in places like Nashville, which is a booming place. The need for primary resident provides more security and stability in the community. It also gets into, uh, an affordability housing issue, because what is happening on Mount Washington, and maybe some of your communities as well, is that corporations or literally who have no attachment to this neighborhood are buying up pieces of property with the goal of Airbnb-ing them. And some of these are single-family homes, which are now being in the bid against, uh, when an individual is bidding up against a corporation to acquire a piece of property, the odds are corporations always going to win, as you know, because they have a limited bag of cash. And from a, from a multi-unit standpoint, you really have to ask the question, when you do have an apartment complex of five or more, uh, units, and the sole intention is to become an Airbnb short-term rental as a corporation lending them out, isn't that a hotel? And in fact, many of the, the zoning areas up in Mount Washington and in many places in the city are strictly for primary residents, not, and they're strictly not allowed to have hotels. So this is skirting the law. And so I think we really need to hold ourselves all accountable as citizens of our neighborhoods, and go and buy the correct zoning, which is around residents, and the need for primary residence for Airbnbs. Let's join other cities in the country and follow what they have. Let's also get a sense of urgency around this before the next shooting or something awful happens.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Tom Brady. I live at 354, uh, 2 Camback Street, Mount Washington. I'm down here to thank Bruce Kraus for what he has done for us for the last few months, uh, to save for the Bailey Avenue project. We had problems up here with accidents like crazy, and he came up and he sat with us and listened to, we were nice to him, and he agreed with us, and we cleared out the project so far. And the iron fence on Bailey Avenue too, we talked to his office, we went to the courtrooms, his staff came in and worked with us. Joy did that and came in, and we got that straightened out. With the graffiti up on Grandview Park, we, we called it in, and some of the graffiti was moved in a few days. And as I say, I want to thank Bruce for doing all this stuff. Now Bruce, I, I agree with you, and I like to stand with right beside you on the trash pickup. I just talked to Mr. Coghill about the problem within his area and everything. I appreciate what you're trying to do, and it's, you know, it's just disgusting looking all the trash scattered around, and we got to keep it cleaned. And I'm just here to say, you know, thank you for what you have done. You know, in the future, I would talk to Teresa Smith, because if you, if she remembers on the 4th, the 4th of July on Grandview Avenue, it was overflowing. Maybe they're going to have to start putting two trash cans, not those expensive thousand-dollar trash cans. Those $4.99 trash cans are just as good as the thousand-dollar ones. So get, get them put up there, and, um, but otherwise, I want to thank you, Bruce, again, as I said, we work together. As I say, when I come down here mad at you, you know, there's a big problem. And it's a problem, as I say, the accidents on Bailey Avenue was out of control, and then the fire on my street was out of control. We got that fixed too, and, uh, just want to thank you, and as I say, I thanked your office, but I want to thank you personally too, you know? Okay, have a nice day. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in, uh, Cady Weaver, Irving's Tire, 715 Mercer Street. Today, I came down, and I had spoke to Mr. Brady. I told him, and I'll tell you just like I said, "You come down here and you're praising Bruce Kraus, and when you do that, he takes and interrupts and says, 'Well, let me talk,'" and talks about a half an hour, then goes back in their room, then comes back out after a half an hour and sits and talks to Ms. Gross. Do you just understand what I'm saying? I'm saying that, okay, you just pray, they praising him. Certain people come down and praise you. You just won't even come to meetings, but yet you'll go on the weekend, like this woman say, uh, "He came up Saturday." And Coghill, I'm tired of you. When the people are talking, don't come back there. Just like he said, you was back there talking with him. See how ignorant and disrespectful you are. Do you understand that you are supposed to be listening to the citizens that are here on this podium, not back there talking and waving and, uh, 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 because they're your neighbors. I said this, and I'll say to every one of you, "I'm not your neighbor, and if I was, treat me like you treat these people down here." You will run back there. My councilman told me that it's against the law for him to say anything while I'm up here. But you just run back there too. You're, I said, "How come they all in jail, every one of them?" Because when you white people come down, they run down it. But black people, "I'm, I'm racist, I'm this and I'm that." I'm tired of it, because I see it. I see how you're treated differently. I see how my community, and I've been coming 22 years, just like this, I talked to the mayor, and I told him too. I was telling him something. He said, "Oh, I don't know nothing about that." That's because you don't watch city council. I said, "You're just as bad as a Purdue though." One thing I said about Tom Murphy, and I gave him H-E-L-L. I chased him through this community, through this, um, building. Every day, he would come, when I'd come to the meeting, he would be coming out. And so, so automatically, if he's the mayor, I would always confront him. But I knew he was watching city council. You just won't even come to the meeting. You had a meeting last night. She was the only one here yesterday. There's a meeting, citizens this afternoon at 3 o'clock. See how they change it? One time it's 1:30, now it's 3 o'clock. But it's about the food, food. And I'm saying, we live up in the Hill District, we're in a food desert. We don't have a supermarket. And when you had one, you made sure that the buses, you could get down to the supermarket, but to get back two streets up on Befford, you had to go through town. The old, the senior stalked me, live up on Befford. She said, "Go tell them I came here that year." She had her son, who's 50, but he's mentally challenged. She said, "Don't make no sense." She said, "Yvonne, I can get down to the supermarket, but I can't get two streets up. We have to come through town." Why is it that we have to come through town? Because our councilmen don't fight for us. When they had about the bussing, that's why we don't have a bus up there and coming to take us to the hospital.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I apologize for yesterday. Um, you guys witnessed my TBI brain missing complete thoughts, so here's my next attempt. Um, school-based contracted therapy is causing an economic divide between kids with the welfare and health insurance and those of non-welfare insurance. And I can say, after talking to several people, it's a discrimination from UPMC. Um, Obamacare should have erased this. We should not have kids being able to go down the hall and have their therapy, and other kids have to leave school, walk back home, meet up with their parents, and then go to, um, their therapy. All kids should have a dentist, a pediatrician, and a behavior health specialist from birth on. Um, my old foster care kids now moms have been bringing this to my attention. They're getting threatening notes because 10 days, 10 days a year is not enough for these kids, especially in a pandemic, coming out of a pandemic, whichever way you want to look at it. We have a solution. UPMC is one of the largest medical teaching universities. They already have buses or mobile units coming out for breast cancer, for the homeless, for the immigrants. We need to have a onsite dentist, therapist, pediatrician. These kids should be able to go to school, stay at school, stay safe. Make them pay the taxes, or let them provide the residents. They're coming to the senior centers all the time. Please? I hope that made sense today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any, anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, that will move us on to our standing committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one new paper, Bill 816.
Bill 816, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Primary AIM LLC DBA Wendy's in the amount of $7,053.80 in settlement of a claim for damage to the overhang canopy at the Wendy's Drive-Thru located at 2410 West Liberty Avenue from a, from a city EMS vehicle.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. We need a motion to approve the invoices. Can you discuss? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P-cards.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing, councilman? Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. Our first new paper is Bill 811.
Bill 811, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the director of the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the construction of the Homewood Park Community Gathering Space in the amount of $500,000 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 812.
Bill 812, a resolution granting unto Penley Park South Inc., their successors and assigns, the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new ADA compliant ramp with handrails on both sides at 5700 Penn Avenue in the 8th Ward, 9th Council District of the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 813.
Bill 813, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the East Liberty Mobility Plan in the amount of $500,000 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Discussion, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Brief discussion. I'm, I'm just curious, um, to learn a little bit more about this East Liberty Mobility Plan. I know this is not the district that I represent, but given that, you know, there are a lot of, um, uh, similarities and that it's adjacent to Shadyside, where I hear from a lot of people with concerns about, you know, increased traffic, especially now that we're returning to the post-lockdown phase of the pandemic. Um, yeah, I'm just curious how this fits into our citywide mobility plan and how it all fits together. Is there someone, I see Director Lucas here.
Director Lucas is with us, I believe.
Yes, hi. Uh, Kim Lucas, Director for the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Thank you for your question, council member. So, East Liberty was identified as a priority community in our pedestrian safety and action plan that we released recently. That plan took a look at the crash data citywide, and took a look at where there were high-risk and high-mean corridors based on things like transit ridership, because a lot of our, um, our safety incidents are happening near transit stops, and other data of that nature. So this funding will be used in designing a safe system approach, principal corridor safety improvement focusing on pedestrian, bicycle, and transit accessibility improvements. It'll be used to supplement ongoing planning efforts, and in the future as a local match for construction funding grants. The corridors that have been considered for this project, um, and I'll list them briefly, Penn Avenue from East Liberty to North Engley, Center Avenue from North Engley to East Liberty, Highland Avenue from Center Avenue to State 3, North Engley Avenue from Center Avenue to Hayes, East Liberty Boulevard from North Engley to Penn Avenue. The reason these specific corridors are where the, um, concentration of efforts will be is because of those five corridors, they count for 77% of the total crashes in that community, 93% of the pedestrian crashes for East Liberty, 86% of the bicycle crashes, and 82% of the total serious injury crashes that are happening are along those corridors. So by taking a safe systems approach, we hope to drastically bring down those incidents.
Thank you. That's helpful to know. Uh, just a few follow-up questions. Is there a component of this that will involve transportation demand management?
Absolutely. So, transportation demand management for those that are listening in is basically the business of encouraging people to get around without single occupancy vehicles. So that means encouraging things like carpooling, public transportation, walking and biking, um, to manage congestion, improve air quality, and improve quality of life. So if I make these corridors safer and more accessible for people to get to public transit and for walking and for biking, we will be encouraging and increasing those, because we're going to make them safer and more attractive.
That is great to hear. I have long wanted, understanding again, or acknowledging again, that Penn Avenue cuts through many neighborhoods, but for a portion of it, it cuts through East Liberty, and then, you know, on one side, it's Shadyside one side, East Liberty or Larmour. Um, large new developments that are, that are springing up, um, it's like perfect opportunity to be working with those building owners, you know, developers, um, building managers, employers, whatever it might be, to get their employees or their residents, you know, on board with choosing to, to, you know, get around without a single occupancy vehicle. So, um, I'm glad to hear that that's part of it. And then, I guess my last question is, how does this fit into all of the other kind of citywide or larger plans that we have? Is it really going to be a standalone, or does it fit into our longer-term, long-range transportation or mobility plans?
Um, it fits into the plans in that it's, this is, this is the implementation of a citywide planning effort. So the pedestrian safety action plan looks citywide to prioritize locations for more robust planning efforts, like the East Liberty Mobility Plan that's happening right now, and then for also these, um, implementation projects. As we mentioned, as I mentioned, this money will be used as match money for potential future grants to actually construct safety improvements. So it fits into the network by being a part of a network that was evaluated, and rising to the top is one of the highest priority locations in the city based on crash data. And to your earlier point, I should mention that the city and my department just welcomed the city's first-ever transportation demand management coordinator. So we have an individual, it's a grant-funded position, where we've got our funding for two years via Pendot, where his job is to focus on all those things that you mentioned, working with major employers, uh, including the city being one of those major employers, working with local transportation service providers to make sure that they've got great offerings for employers and other people moving around the city, making sure that new developments are being developed with the amenities in place to make it easy to, to get there by biking or walking or public transportation. And so we have more than ever, as a city and a department, a focused effort on TDM.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Hi, Director Lucas, thank you for, for being here and for speaking to this topic. And I try to be brief, but I, um, I also live adjacent to, and my, you know, district kind of surrounds the other portion of, um, East Liberty, I think, between, um, Councilwoman Strasburger and I, we maybe cover like two-thirds of the boundaries of the East Liberty neighborhood. And so many of those corridors we're speaking to lead, you know, into the districts that I represent. And so we're, you know, myself and my constituents are transferring them all the time as well. And, um, congratulations on hiring the TDM coordinator. Um, I, I hear you when you say it was grant-funded. I think we should be fully funding a position like that out of city budget. I think it's integral. And I just want to take a moment to say what I've said before at this table, which is that we've never faced this much development and construction, new construction in the city in its history, I believe. And especially in large sites where you're seeing, like in East Liberty and in the Strip District, 900-car parking garages being built, and cars being induced to places that just didn't have people or cars until these giant projects are built, right? And so then you have people and cars in conflict on right-of-way that you are charged with managing that are, were not built to accommodate. The sidewalks are too small for pedestrians, the crossings are unsafe, and you have cars and people in conflict. Um, but to, I think, a larger point is that we can't just manage the right-of-way. We also have to manage the land use. And that is not under dormitory's planning charge, it's under city planning charge. And so I would like to hear more, and it's beyond the scope of this bill, so I'm just keeping it brief, but I believe what we really need is to have both our land use and our right-of-way planning, um, and these outdated zoning requirements for so much parking, I'm going to say the dirty word here that people don't like to talk about, um, are outdated, and they're, they're building an environment that then we have to try to manage because we've built an unsafe environment. So that's, I'm just pontificating. I didn't answer it, ask any questions, but I'm glad that you're doing what you can do now to basically undo damage that we did in the way we constructed these corridors, both outside the East Liberty boundary and inside of it, and, and create these dangerous corridors where people are, are getting killed. So, um, I'll be rid of that. And, um, I'm happy to follow up with you another time to try to pursue better planning around, that don't create dangerous corridors that we then have to remediate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That will take us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first deferred paper is Bill 270.
Bill 270, an ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VII Business Licensing, Article VII Business Licenses. Article VII Business Licenses by creating a new Chapter 768 Short Term Rentals, sponsored by Council President Smith.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held two weeks. Bill 465.
Bill 465, an ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic, Article VII Parking, Chapter 549 Residential Parking Permit Program, Section 549.08 Visitor Permits, Short Term Rentals to the Issuance of Licenses, Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits, so as to relate the issue of residential parking permits for short-term rentals to the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held two weeks. Bill 698.
Bill 698, a resolution providing for the designation of an historic district under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances, the certain properties known as the Murray Hill Historic District Expansion located at 1163 Murray Hill Avenue and 1165 Murray Hill Avenue in Squirrel Hill in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owners of 1165 Murray Hill Avenue support the nomination.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Brief discussion. I just wanted to thank those who have been advocating for this from the neighborhood. About 22 years ago, when this historic neighborhood was established, there was a clerical error and two properties were inadvertently left out of the historic district, and this is righting a wrong that's 22 years in the making, that came at great effort and expense, in some expense, from a longtime former resident of Murray Hill Avenue, Dan Holland, who put this forward and spoke at the hearing yesterday, and I know his family supports it as well, and it's supported by, you know, majority, if not all, of the members of the street. So, I'm grateful for the work that was put into this and I'm happy to support today.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 782.
Bill 782, a resolution amending Resolution Number 130 of 2018 effective January 1st, 2018 by updating the continued designation of an Oakland Business Improvement District, sponsored by Councilmember Kraus.
A motion to approve, very brief discussion, please.
Second.
Thank you. I just want to thank members in advance for their support of the renewal of the Oakland Business Improvement District. I cannot fathom it not functioning in Oakland and the services that it provides within their boundaries, and so, I'm very, very happy to support for the continuation, and again, thank members for their support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Our new paper is Bill 817.
Bill 817, an ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article I, Section 902.03 Zoning Map by changing from local neighborhood commercial to urban industrial, three parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, 12th Ward.
Motion to approve.
Bill 4.
Actually, I got to rescind that motion, right? Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Yeah, you're right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for cablecast public hearing, Bill 818.
Bill 818, a resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Carbon Disclosure Projects Climate Resiliency Funds for development of project plans and funding strategies for resiliency hubs in the amount of $25,000 and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 819.
Bill 819, an ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article IV Planning Districts, Chapter 910 Downtown Districts to update review and approval processes.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for cablecast public hearing, Bill 820.
Bill 820, an ordinance accepting a new street name, Banksville Park Drive, in the 20th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in September 2022. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
To approve.
Second.
Second. Really, really brief discussion. It's really more philosophical in nature, but ultimately, someone bears the responsibility to add this to Google so that it shows up in all of the, you know, the data when searched. And I'm assuming that's, forgive me, well, maybe IMP or a combination of IMP and DOMI. I'm just curious.
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
Do you have Rebecca Reinhold with us? She might be able to answer.
Good morning. Maybe not. I don't want to delay the meeting. I can take it offline. I'm just curious how that happens because, basically because of public safety and, you know, making sure they're included in all the different Google Maps and Waze and all those kinds of things for public safety vehicles to respond. That's all, but I'll take it offline. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 821.
Bill 821, an ordinance accepting a new street name, Shelter House Road, in the 11th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in September 2022. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last committee of the day, which is Intergovernment Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. One deferred paper, Bill 641.
Bill 641, a resolution of the City of Pittsburgh adopting an amendment to the Steel Valley Authority's Articles of Incorporation to decrease the number of members of the Board of Directors of the Authority.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
So, Madam President, I believe that we were waiting on communication from the Law Department. I have not received one. Do you have anything to?
Could you come to the table? Could you mind, Councilwoman Gross, if we have Solicitor Fritzen come to the table?
Sure, thank you, I appreciate it.
Just briefly, because he's been working on it. With the Law Department and the mayor's office.
Dan Fritzen, Solicitor to City Council, City of Pittsburgh. So, this is, I guess, still in motion. There was a proposal to amend the Articles of Incorporation for the Steel Valley Authority. However, there's an intergovernmental agreement that says you can't change the Articles of Incorporation unless the agreement has been modified. And so, where we're at is the intergovernmental agreement hasn't been amended yet, but they have made promises that they will do that if, but the bigger question, of course, is whether or not, and I don't have an answer to this, if it's in the best interest of City Council or the people of Pittsburgh to reduce the number of seats of the City of Pittsburgh, because all the other members of the Steel Valley Authority are not like Pittsburgh. They're either, you know, strong council governments, whereas in the City of Pittsburgh, the mayor appoints the members of that authority, and their comment has been that members of the Steel Valley Authority have not been filling their seats, which is what is the impetus behind them, reducing the number across the board. But we're in a situation that's different than the other members, because the other members of the Steel Valley Authority, their council appoints their members to the authorities, whereas here, our mayor appoints the members to that authority. So, if we haven't been filling those seats, we have to coordinate that effort between our executive and legislative branches, which the pronouncement of the difference between the executive and legislative branch is not the same for all the other townships and boroughs that are members of this authority versus the City of Pittsburgh. And then, we're also larger and the major contributor, and it's just a different.
So, we don't want to lose a voice on there if we don't have to. So, we're trying to work through it. But I also want to thank you and Zeke Redlinger from the mayor's office for working through this together, and of course, our amazing Law Department chief, Khrusha Kubiak is just amazing, I just want to say. But, yeah, I think, no, I think you all are, but I just want to thank you for working through this all. I never thought we'd have to address something like this, because it was back, it was created back when the steel mills were closing and there was a collapse of the industry. And so, we don't even know, I don't even know the person who's appointed to represent us. They've been on that long, though.
Yeah, I don't know either. So, basically, I think that a meaningful deliberation needs to happen on a council level as to whether you want to do that. And then, the second part of that is.
What would be the best interest for the council?
Well, the legal process for doing it, so that you don't amend Articles of Incorporation, and that's a null and void operation because the agreement hasn't been amended. So, everybody who has agreed to amend the Articles of Incorporation has basically done a, and nothing, it's a null act. It's not, because it's not authorized by the agreement of the intergovernmental agreement, then the vote to change the Articles of Incorporation is null and void.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kraus.
Yeah, thank you. So, that I understand what we're being, the action we're being advised to take today.
Hold.
Yeah, okay, because the, not to oversimplify, the cart's before the horse.
Correct.
Right. And so, the under advisement, we hold until said time when, as you stated, those obstacles have been cleared. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Yes, thank you. Madam President, you answered this to a certain degree, but what is the purpose of us being on a Steel Valley Authority Board?
Well, they're supposedly changing the focus of the industry and expanding their scope of work. So, we want to know what, not only the benefit to City Council, but we want to know if there's a detriment to us losing a seat. And so, that's part of why we've been, this actually came to us last year and we held it for over a year now, and then they came back, but they sent it through the mayor's office this time. And Mayor Padudis allowed us to hold it, you know, till we were comfortable with it. And now, I guess they decided to bring it back with a new administration, and so, this administration's been supportive of us as well, working through to make sure we're comfortable with it. It's not something anybody wants to, you know, argue over, we just want to get it right for the City of Pittsburgh.
Yeah, and I understand, maybe back when the steel industry was booming in the Mon Valley, but why, I mean, I guess I just don't understand why we have seats on this Steel Valley Authority Board, and how many do we have? Do we, do we know?
We had three, correct? Yeah, we had, we had three and they want us to go down to two.
It just seems outdated to me, I guess, and we don't even know.
But I think that they're trying to update it, is what I want to say, to make it more applicable for today's world and what we're trying to do in the region. That's my understanding. But we'll look, I'll get you a better answer.
This seems a little outdated to me, but, okay, I'm just curious as to why we even held those seats to begin with, but thanks.
You, Councilwoman Schlossberger?
No, I don't have any comment, thank you.
Okay.
It reminds me of a little.
I will defer.
Can I just say, it reminds me a little bit of Connect. You know, there's all these efforts of people coming together, we're paying money out, but what's the benefit to the city? You know, I think those are things we really have to look into. I don't know all the, I don't know the answers to all those. Thank you.
So, the motion is to hold two weeks?
Hold two weeks.
Have a second?
Motion to hold two weeks. Second, Erica, please.
Second.
Sorry, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held two weeks.
Thank you, Councilwoman, sorry, I should have thanked Councilwoman Gross for.
Our last bill of the day is Bill 814.
Bill 814, a resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 9/37 Liberty Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15222.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. Our meeting announcements are, at this afternoon at 3 o'clock, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on urban agriculture and food equity, providing the Food Policy Council ambassadors an opportunity to present their policy recommendations. Speaker registration will close at 1:30 PM today. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, October 25th and Wednesday, October 26th at 10 AM respectively. Speaker registration closes at 9 AM October 18th for the regular meeting and 9 AM October 19th for the standing committees meeting. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadlines. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything from members? Madam President?
I just want to say that with, I know council has been doing a lot to try to address the homelessness population in the City of Pittsburgh, which we get asked questions every single day. But thank Councilman Coghill, I've gotten phone calls from the media yesterday asking for updates. So, again, we have a task force, we formed a task force, Councilman Coghill's cheering that task force to make recommendations to the administration and to the county on those that issue. But we're also getting a lot of phone calls about the violence in the City of Pittsburgh. It is out of control. Any violence is not good, but there's just so much going on, and I think that, you know, we all keep talking about the quality of life and the importance of, you know, what we do for our residents every day. I think that Councilman Coghill ran his campaign on back to basics, and he won overwhelmingly. Residents said that's what they want, they want us to focus on their everyday quality of life issues. And so, I'm just going to say, I think, moving forward, council needs to, you know, focus more on what we can do. I wish everything was in our jurisdiction, under our jurisdiction. It's not, but we do an awful lot, we've, you know, allocated millions of dollars to, you know, stop the violence and efforts. And when I see community groups that we've given funding to questioning what the city's doing, well, my question back is, what are you doing because you've got funding for this in the community? So, please give us some updates on what you're doing, because not everything's about money. Sometimes it's about, you know, relationships and helping young people, and we're talking about the foster care system now, and, I mean, the effect that has to have on our society today. When you see a lot of kids, I mean, there's some, obviously, some wonderful foster care parents, and we're so grateful for them, but there are a lot of kids in abusive situations, and that's one of the reasons I called for a post-agenda on it. And we're putting kids through that system and then expecting them to come out, you know, with unscarred, you know, unscathed, without any emotional stresses or challenges in their life. And so, you know, there's just so many things that we're putting kids through today, that's one of them. They, obviously, just the entire system that we have just needs, I mean, we really need to do something more, but it really has to be a collective effort. It is not just City Council. We are the people that people see on the grounds, we're the people that people are in the communities, so we get a lot of it. But a lot of times, the things that we can't do are things that are superseded by state and federal laws, and even, and the county has funding for. So, I think that there's, you know, although our hearts want to do what, you know, write and tell people, it really is challenging, and it's frustrating to us, too, when, you know, we're hearing about the violence. Our own families here have been affected by a lot of the violence recently, yesterday, and I won't talk about it without talking to the person to make sure they're comfortable with me sharing that story. But it's just something that hurts everyone in the City of Pittsburgh, and now that you're hearing about innocent bystanders being shot, this is not okay. I mean, we have got to sit down together, stop coming up with all these great ideas that we think are going to work, and let's really sit down and have a real conversation with the public, with our community, with our residents about what really needs to happen in the City of Pittsburgh, because whatever we're doing is not working, and whatever we've done for the past, you know, 20 years is not working. I mean, it's just not working. And, I mean, there was a time where crime was lower, but I wonder if employment was higher. I wonder if there were less, if there was more social services available to families. Whatever it is, I think we've got to have those conversations. I just, I wish I knew what it was, I wish I knew what the answer was. But I do want to say, when I'm getting the media calls, you are working on it with Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilwoman Gross, and Councilman Wilson. And I don't know if you want to share anything about the homeless task force that you're cheering.
No, I'd love to. First of all, I want to thank our committee for being engaging, Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Gross, and Councilwoman Strasburger. You know, it's easy to just let this go by the wayside and let the administration come up with their ideas, which we look forward to hearing, and we are scheduling an appointment with them and the county for next week. But, no, we think we have some really smart, passionate people on this committee. I want to thank you for appointing me as chair. I couldn't ask for a more engaging group, and, you know, we're adamant as to putting our recommendations forward and. our recommendations forward and hopefully, you know, I think they're really good recommendations, but it's not a one size fits all. I think our recommendations might look completely different from what the mayor and the administration and perhaps the county come up with, but, you know, it's just a matter of getting different ideas out there. And, you know, we have been working hard on presenting our recommendations and we look forward to doing that. So, thanks.
Thank you. And I just, I just, if you don't mind, Councilman, I just want to say that I think that, again, although council's really trying, I think it's time to, you know, we need to put all of our politics aside. I don't care if it's the previous administration, you know, two previous administrations ago, five previous, if somebody knows something and they want to sit down with us current, you know, the current elected officials, I think that's a great idea. But I also want to add, I think that I hear, you always hear stuff about change. And I want to say, there is, I am just blown away sometimes by the institutional knowledge and how much that really does mean to the, to our residents. And I don't think people understand or value that as much as they, they, they realize, that they should. Because I, I hear a lot from members or people that have worked for the city for 30, 40 years, 20, 30, 40, and the things they teach us and tell us are things that I never thought of before. I think even having our, our, you know, people that have been here, people that have been elected for a long time, people who have, you know, worked for the city for a long time or the county, if they have something to share, we'd love to hear it. And so I think maybe we should come up with some way to, to do that. And I'll talk to Councilman Cross because he chairs that, that committee, and we are changing the name of that committee to Public Safety and Health. So we'll talk to him about something in that regard. So I, I just don't know. I wish I knew the answer. My, my heart hurts for the families and the community and I wanted, and the business owners that are terrified they're losing their businesses or have to pull their businesses out because of everything that they're seeing, and kids that are hurting in a system that they feel like nobody's listening to them. So if there was some way we could help people, I just, I want to do it, just let's do it together and get it done right. If it can be.
Thank you. Councilman Strasburger?
Thank you. I mean, I'm, I'm with you, Council President. It's, it's heartbreaking to watch what's happening in our city, and it's not limited to our city, it's happening in rural and urban areas all across the country right now. The country is really hurting. And, you know, I'm grateful to the work of Reverend Burgess and, and others and the mayor's administration on the Plan for Peace and other, other things that will make us a thriving, healthy city. And so we have the plans and I think we know what we need to do. I, I really wanted to zero in, maybe it was because of my conversation with Bernadette this morning, who gave some, some public comments today and yesterday, but on behavioral health. I mean, I still believe that if we could get access, everyone access to mental health and wellness services in the city of Pittsburgh, especially our youth, you know, it's not a panacea, it's not going to solve everything, but we would be a better, healthier city and we'd be a, we'd have a stronger democracy too. I really do believe that. So, and again, it's one of those things, it's not easy for the city of Pittsburgh or city council to enact on its own. But in partnership with PPS and the school district and in partnership with the county certainly is something that we can, one, continue to learn more about and, two, work to enact change in partnership with some private partners, right, that do offer those services, whether it's a, you know, a nonprofit hospital system or whether it's a federally qualified health center. So, you know, how do we, how do we scale that up? How do we give behavioral health access to every single person who needs it in the city? Which I think actually every single person in the city does need it, so we should give access to everyone who lives in the city.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think that it's going to take all of us for sure, you know, coming together. And, and I think the current administration's doing some things that are unique that I really like seeing. And I've mentioned to Mayor Gani, I would love to see a facility north, south, east, west, and central. Don't forget a sector of the city, which the west is often forgotten, but don't forget a sector of the city. And I would say, let's open a rec center or a community center that's open 24 hours a day and people are met with social services, you know, and things that they need, not just a basketball and gym and, and things. I mean, those are great, but it's also great to get, to take care of people's minds, not just the bodies. So it would be, it would be helpful to have something across the city where we, and this would be a great partnership with the school district. And Reverend Burgess and I have talked about this before, Mayor Gani, Councilman Lavelle. And I, I just want to say, it just can't be Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Burgess. We've all got to pitch in and do some more because it, it affects our entire city, affects everyone in the city of Pittsburgh. And if our city's hurting, we're all hurting. So I just want to make sure that we're moving forward together and, and I, I just, I wish I knew all the answers. I just want the public, we're so quiet about it, but at the same time, I know we all talk about it. And I just want the public to know, it is something we are discussing, it is something we do care about, it is something we're trying to, to address.
No, I want to thank you for your passion for this, and, and I'm so glad, Madam President, that you point out that we do care. There's only so much that we can do. You know, there's a plethora of problems as to what's contributing to crime, not only in our city, but across the nation. Devaluing the police, to me, is a really big obstacle that we're facing right now. I don't think we will find recruits for our recruiting class. I'm very interested to see how many people apply. That's going to be a problem. So, you know, also the, the justice system, you know, judicial system, you know, we're seeing more and more people getting out of, being released, whether it's the closing of Schuman Juvenile Detention Center or not. We can pin it all on one thing, but, you know, I think it's also a society problem across the nation, not just here in the city. So we've got some major, major problems I think we're going to be facing in policing throughout the next decade, I would say. But, so, many things that contribute to it. Thanks.
I agree. Thank you. There are a huge part, and I don't want to forget anybody, when I say we're all a part of it, we are all a part of it. And the media's a part of it. I mean, everyone's a part of it. Reverend, I'm sorry.
As always, I appreciate our president's remarks. She is absolutely right that the need for everyone to play a part. It's interesting, I was thinking about this and talking with my son early this morning about this, right? The causes of violence in that it is national. We know that whatever's going on is not just Pittsburgh based because it's occurring across the country at pretty much the same rate. And so there are these historical reasons, we know what those are in terms of systematic institutional racism and the lack of resources, right? So we know that the two ways we could solve the problem overnight, we can't do. One of them is that the city was a snow globe. Like imagine if the city was a snow globe, right? If we could turn the city upside down and shake it around and put it upside, right side up, we would probably eliminate 80% of our problems. That, it would create a city where it was diverse, right? There would be no concentrated poverty, you know, everything would be, would be mixed both racially, economically, and probably most of our problems would go away. The second way, which we also can't do, is give every low and moderate income family about $200,000 cash. That also would probably do it. If you gave somewhere around $200,000 per family cash in the bank, that would probably make up for the decades of lack of investment in their families, lack of opportunity, and we give them that, those, that sort of chunk of money. But of course, that would be the city budget totally for the last, the next 10 years to do that. So we can't do any one of those things. The other thing we know is the pandemic did two things. The pandemic did two direct things. One, it took away all the social services for two years. So all the intervention programs, all of the counseling programs, all of the social programs that go to reduce violence for two years because of the pandemic, they mostly didn't exist. Right, right, right? So we know that happened, and that maybe explains in part why nationally, you know, gun rates are going up, crime's going up. The other thing it did was it gave the kids, young people, two years of not interacting with each other and using social media primarily as a way to interact. And so as a result, you have all these built up frustrations that the kids have. Well, you know, because of not being exposed to programs and not being exposed to each other. And so they are now getting back to being with each other with all these years of pent up stuff, trauma, social media posting, and so you're seeing, you're seeing that. I am actually, actually more hopeful about our future because I think we are, we as a city have finally got it, right? As I've talked to other cities and we are, we've linked up recently, we are a partner city with a national organization that I have been shouting with about this. So, and I'll just say this for the general public, there are, and the mayor's Plan for Peace, which I was, you know, fortunate enough to be a co-author of, is the right approach, right? It is, it is, it is using a public health model and data-driven. That's right. Then there are four component parts other than those two that all have to be done simultaneously. One is community partnerships, that we provide resources and partnerships directly with community-based organizations. That's right. That includes our, our reach outreach workers. What Councilwoman Strasburger's saying is absolutely right. She's 1,000% right, is that many of these at-risk families have really deep social, emotional problems, right? And we know various forms of cognitive therapy can be, and problem solving is really very helpful. And so the stuff that Lord Dragowski's doing and, and the homeless stuff that the council's doing, all of those, those sort of counseling, therapeutic, drug rehabilitation, all those sort of emotional, social, cognitive restructuring problems, restructuring work to eliminate social problems, that works. So you need, you need that services. So you need partnerships, community-based organizations, you need services. Then the next thing is the police. You've never heard me, not one time, on my term on council, ever talk about not having police, right? You've never heard me say that, right? I am a fan, I have been sometimes to other people's consternation, I have said, we have one of the best trained, best manned police forces in the United States, and I stand by that, right? They're not perfect, but they're damn good. And we've put 20 years worth of training in them. This force we have today is not the force we had 20 years ago. Right now, we have some of the, the best professionals in the country on our police force. They're underpaid and overworked, but they are still pretty good. And Chief Bickerstaff has come up with a model of policing for these communities based on the Cincinnati and Dallas model that I, I wholeheartedly agree with, that looks at specific targeting of specific groups, adopters who are doing crime, specific place, space interventions. I agree with that 1,000%. And then the last thing, the last arm, is community investment in development. Many of these communities where these high-risk activities occur, like in Homewood, no grocery stores, no drugstores, no, no, no sit-down restaurants, no, you know, only one gas station. So you have to do all of them together over many years. It's the right approach. So we're doing, we have the right approach that I think will bear dividends over time. The question though, it happens, and this is, this is, so I'm very hopeful, you know, and I'm sure this mayor will continue, but the only, the only fear I have, and I've seen this too across the country, I went to a seminar two years ago where the author wrote a book about this, that, 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 that he, he attests the decrease, and that was, I think, 2000, I want to say 19, 20? He said the decrease in gun violence and in crime has to do directly with the investment in social services and community-based programming. There's always going to be a tension of wanting to eliminate and put money into prisons, into, into prosecution, war on drugs, you know, we have to resist that temptation to be, to punish the people who have been victimized for 400 years and, and have a balanced approach. Have to have police, you know, can't commit homicides, can't commit crime, can't terrorize neighborhoods, can't tear up business districts. That's true. But at the same time, it has to be balanced and thoughtful. And, 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 and what I, the reason I'm having this longer conversation, I did call for a post agenda that will talk about, and I've scheduled it, tried to schedule it already with the clerk's office, because I think it's really that important, but everybody has to do it as a team. And, and even in the development work that Councilman Lavelle and I, I do, even though sometimes, you know, I, I do work with low and moderate income communities, it can't be in isolation, right? And I, and I say this also, for instance, the, the Lomer, which is maybe the best example of our work, would have never happened without East Liberty. It would have never happened. The reason that we got $30 million from the federal government, we built 400 units of housing in East Liberty and Lomer is because of the boom of East Liberty. Because when the HUD officials came, they didn't go to Lomer first. They went to Bakery Square first. They looked at Google first. They went into the boardroom and looked at Shady Side and said, these low-income residents will be able to walk to the amenities of East Liberty and Shady Side less than, and they have people, we have people who come to Lomer to see that development from all over the country, all over the world. HUD said privately it's the best development in the country because that's the model of what they want it to be. This idea that you want to build housing in the middle of blight and put people away from, from, from amenities is absolutely nuts. So there is a relationship between, like Bakery Square right, Warner Capital right now is building low-income housing in Lomer. There is a relationship that we can foster between affluent communities and their neighbors that are less affluent that are transformational for both entities, right? Because the customer base is still the customer base, right? Low-income people still buy things. They still buy, you know, clothes and stores and they're still going to go to Bakery Square and have dinner sometimes and get, I think it's called Jenny's Ice Cream, right? Which is actual, by the way, I'm, this free plug, it's absolutely delicious. But anyway, Jenny's Ice Cream?
Anthony's was voted number one in the state.
It's a brand new, brand new ice cream place, stage, right? Yeah, it's right, brand new ice cream place, right, right, right in, right in, right in Baker. So, and council is wise enough to do it. That's the interesting part. We have a council who kind of knows how to do this work. We kind of know how to do the work. We have an administration that I think is interesting in partnering with us. So I'm actually very hopeful at the stage we are now that we'll be able to implement this, and it has to be together though. It has, because we're one city. We're all related, we're all family, we're one city, and we are, we are, so I'm actually, I'm more hopeful. I have to, let me stop. I won't say anything, but I'll tell you after, after, I'll tell you when this is off. But let's do this together. And I think it's, I think there are places, we have, this is a, I think we have this moment. I was thinking about this morning. I don't know, I don't know that we've ever had a more experienced council in the history of our city. I don't think we have, right? We have, we have, I don't think. You take our years together, you know, many of us have been here, you know, 13, 14, 15 years. And so, you know, you put our time together, you know, you put administration, I think, that's willing to partner with us and willing to try new things. I'm, I'm, I'm talking too long, but I think I'm really hopeful, really optimistic of what we can do to show the glory of God in this city. I, I believe we can do, we've done a lot, but I think there's, we can double the work we've done in the past. And so let me stop. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge Reverend Burgess, you know, we don't agree on all policing issues, but I think we agree on more so than we don't agree on.
Yes.
You know, but I just really wanted to take a moment and acknowledge your respect for the police and the men and women who wear that badge. And, you know, I hear it all the time and it reverberates throughout our police force. So, you know, however, we may not agree on everything as far as policing and what it looks like in the future, but we do agree that the profession is needed, it's to be respected, and they know that you respect them. So I want to thank you for that.
And I'm going to thank Councilman Lavelle too, because he's like a silent partner here. You never know what he's up to, and then all of a sudden, he comes up with something really amazing. And I think your communities are fortunate.
He's the smoothest guy in town.
Well, I don't know, there's a toss-up here on both ends of the table.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, need a motion to, all members of the press, yeah, need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned.